Welcome for being here on time. First item is to call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Vias, absence is noted. Mayor Protan McAcrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. We have a public comment at this time, except we have no cards and no one here to speak. Next item on the agenda would be Declaration of a Closed Session. Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Cox. We have five items on the agenda listed as items A through E. Two of them deal with the existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, and is the SEC, ongoing SEC case. That's on behalf of the City Council and the Airport Authority. The next item is anticipated litigation in accordance with Government Code 54956.9D4. It pertains to one potential case. The last two are existing litigation pertaining to medical marijuana dispensaries. The case names and the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. To the extent there is reportable action, we'd report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
No questions? City Council. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy's absence is noted. Councilmember Vias.
Here.
Mayor Protan McAcrin.
Here.
Mayor Cox.
Here. We had a executive session of the City Council at five o'clock. Mr. City Attorney.
We held closed session at five o'clock with respect to five agenda items listed A through E. The first two were existing litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1. There was another anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 54956.9. And then there were two additional existing litigations, also pursuant to Government Code The parties and the litigation, the name of the litigation, as well as the case numbers are set forth on the agenda. There is no reportable action with respect to those items at this time.
Thank you. I would ask council and the audience to stand. We're going to have invocation by Reverend Matt Anderson of the Trinity Lutheran Church, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance with the Victorville Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to offer the invocation. I just arrived here in Victorville April 1st and began as pastor at Trinity, so it's a privilege to be here tonight with you all. And part of our mission at Trinity is to serve our community. And one of the ways we're doing that is this Sunday, in lieu of our worship, or as part of our worship, we are hosting a city cleanup around our neighborhood over there at Molino and La Paz. And so I just wanted to offer that if there's any other ways that we can be of service to our neighborhood, that you would please let me know. And I've left my information with the city clerk. So, will you pray with me? Gracious God, you have promised to always be present with us in all circumstances, and you are present with us here this evening. We give you thanks for granting our city leaders who you call upon to ensure safety and opportunity for all. Grant wisdom and discernment to each of these council members gathered here tonight, that the decisions they make here would lead to the fulfillment of your will, health and wholeness for each individual, and wholeness and harmony for our community. May your peace and reconciliation be known throughout your world, and may it begin here with us. Amen.
It's present time. We have a presentation introduction. Don Trapp is going to formally introduce, I guess, two new battalion chiefs. You can come forward, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's my pleasure to introduce, we have two newly promoted battalion chiefs that are coming here to Victorville Division for us. They're both with more than 25 years' experience, buried throughout county fire, both high desert residents up here, so we're really excited to have them in addition to our team up here. So we have Battalion Chief Daryl Felgar and Battalion Chief Dan Mahia. They're both finishing up their two-week orientation this week, and will begin service here on Saturday. Just want to take a brief moment to introduce them. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
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 Madam City Clerk.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council, and there are no revisions submitted for tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As we begin here, the first item is the public, are the public comment items. In this case, it's singular. I only have one card and no other notes that anyone else is going to be speaking at this time. Danielle Pollard, if you could come forward, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mayor's members of the council. My name is Danielle, and I work for the American Cancer Society. I've come before you this evening to inform you of a historical event that will be happening here in the Victor Valley area. On November 5th, 6th, and 7th, we will be enrolling participants into our CPS 3 Cancer Prevention Study. The 5th and 6th, we will be enrolling participants here at the city offices, and on the 6th, we will be over at VVC. In 1959, we began our first study, CPS 1, which linked smoking to cancer. In 1982, we linked, we did our second study, which linked obesity to cancer. We now ventured onto our third study five years ago, this hoping to look at the emotional and environment, lifestyle, behavioral, and genetics that can prevent and cause cancer. This is the final year to participate into the study. Enrollment is free and non-invasive. To qualify, you must be between the ages of 30 and 65, and have never had cancer, with the exception of basal cell and squamous cell cancer. In order to register, there's a simple survey on the computer, and then you schedule your appointment. Time is up to you on when you would like to come in. When you get to the appointment, it is a simple survey, again, that you will complete with a total of seven questions that are doubled from the previous survey to make sure that we have quality control. After you answer your survey, we will do a small measurement of the waist, take a small blood sample, and then you are free to go. In a couple of months after, you will receive another survey, just asking you as a follow-up some simple questions. You won't hear from us again for two to three years, and then two to three years every year after, for a total of 20 years. Our hopes and our goal is to look at the blood in the future. So, for example, in 10 years, if you just, if you come down with cancer, we can go in, we can pull your blood, look at the blood, and see if there is anything, any kind of markers that may have been listed in your blood 10 years prior that were determined that you were going to eventually have cancer. The ultimate goal is for us to find a cure before somebody actually gets this nasty disease. In closing, I would like to invite each of you to our kickoff on September 20th at VVC at 6:00 PM in the Student Center to, and learn more information about how you can help us spread the word in the high desert area and get participants to enroll in this once-in-a-lifetime historical event for the high desert area. Does anybody have any questions?
No. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I've just received another card from Hakim Majad. Forward, please.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Honorable Council. It's good to see you guys today. I'm so glad the summer's over. It's crazy, but we just had our holiday Labor Day, and I was thinking, our staff, the staff of the city that, you know, wear the V every day, go to work every day, they work hard, they, they had, they ate the budget cuts from the Great Recession, they did all this hard work for us, and I was wondering, do we have any staff appreciation-type things for Labor, Labor since it's Labor Day? I don't know if you guys would consider something like that. Maybe your department heads could do something for the staff, if they already are not doing it. Like I said, I don't know, but Labor Day got me thinking about the labor and the labor that the staff does. I don't know if they're appreciated, or, I mean, I know they're appreciated, but I don't know if, you know, like a luncheon or something for them, to let them know that they are valued, not just Labor Day, but the whole year. So I thought that that would be something to share with you guys, and I'm back, so thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing under BY, a public hearing called to hear arguments for and against approving the PLN 13-0008 General Plan Amendment and Zone Change, Adopt a Negative Declaration, Introduce Ordinance Number 2300, and Adopt Resolution 13046. Is there any questions of staff in regard to the General Plan Amendment?
I do have questions, but I'll reserve until after the closing of the public hearing.
All right. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, if anyone wants to speak on this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is Steve Richard for Richard Design Associates. I'm the applicant for Assembly of God Victorville, and we're here tonight to thank you for your assistance and to answer any questions you might have.
I'll just add a thought of thank you so much for the opportunity to pray over the ribbon cutting a couple of days ago, and it was a great privilege to be a part of a great event, and obviously, our city will be so much better for the interchange that's being done and all of what's happened. So thanks for your consideration with our situation.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant, from any members of the council? No other individuals?
Mayor, I just had a question of staff.
We're going to have questions of staff soon as we close the public hearing. If we have no further comments, no further questions. I'm going to, no further questions, I'm going to close the hearing at this time. Thank you for the presentation. If we have something to come up, which causes questions to be directed to you, I can reopen this for that dialogue, but at this time, questions of staff. And Mr. McAcrin, you're first. Mr. Kennedy, second.
If I could ask, Mr. Borchard to come forward. I understand the reasoning and why we're doing this, and I completely am in accordance with what the Planning Commission decided. My concern is precedent. It seems that we're, you know, going from R4, Very High Density Residential, to C1, Neighborhood Service Commercial, something that was very highly discouraged when I was on the Planning Commission. What justifies it now?
The location of the interchange would be a very good reason. It's a prime intersection. If the church were ever to leave, that commercial could go in, move in to that corner. That would be a viable reason there. The, yeah. You said you know the reasons, so part of the non-monetary portion of the settlement agreement was that the church applied for this, to get this. It makes the church more conforming in some aspects.
And I, and I completely understand that, and I just wanted to get you on the record with respect to this, because you can imagine the other properties we have throughout the city that are very high-density residential, that all of a sudden would want to convert to C1 because we were doing it here. We are not setting precedent with respect to this property. It's due to the interchange, it's due to other outstanding mitigating factors. Is that correct?
Yes, we will look, in fact, we've had a couple of inquiries along Niskwali Road, and we'll look at each one of them for the merits of the proposal to change it from, whether it's R1, or R3, or R4, to commercial, if it makes sense, you know, with the changes. If the property is viable as commercial property, we'll certainly look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
We've had some discussions in the past about the locations of signs, and I think our concern was they should not be near the streetlights, or, is the plan for the current signage consistent with those prior discussions?
Yes, as far as I know, it meets, it meets those.
Staff's okay with the sign locations?
Correct.
I tried to look at the map. I don't know why I couldn't read it that clearly. The sign is going to be away from the intersection on Niskwali or on Balsam?
At least, there's one on each.
Or one of each. On Mariposa? Or is it Mariposa?
My recollection is one on Mariposa, and there's one on Bals, on Niskwali, and they were set so that they were away from the actual intersection to avoid any interference with the traffic signals.
Well, I'm positive that staff has looked at that, but that's going to be a very busy intersection, and there's a lot of lights there, and I know the staff has expressed concern in the past about having any kind of signage, especially movable signs, or whatever they call that, in an area where you have the signals. And so, staff is looking at it, they're satisfied that it doesn't compromise safety issues in any way.
Yes, and I could, if Brian Gingler has anything to add to that, usually, the engineering department looks and conditions the, the ability for the sign to change in a certain amount of time before it changes in order to help prevent issues with traffic, but, like I said, Mr. Gingler may have, I don't know if you have anything to add.
Is this a conditional use permit also in a C1 zone, or is it a permitted use in the C1 zone?
The conditional use permit, there is a portion. It didn't continue on to the council, that only the General Plan Amendment and Zone Change, but yes, there was a site plan and a conditional use permit done through the Planning Commission. The conditional use permit allowed for the church itself, and also, yeah, that was, that was it, that was basically it. The site plan, they, they're doing a site plan for the changes to the site to bring it into conformity. The ball field was never approved previously, so that's to bring that into conformity with the site plan. And the conditional use permit was for the church itself.
Okay.
And the signage.
Okay. Mr. Gingler.
We went under a fairly extensive review of the proposed sign locations, you might recall, in relation to the proximity to the signalized intersections, and we did raise a concern, but the locations were revised. This was some time ago, and then we had no further objection to the locations. As long as the proposed locations are consistent with that, we, we have no objection, and I'm, I'm not overly concerned with what was proposed.
Okay. Any other questions? Questions? Chair is open for motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion, but I'd like to make a comment preceding that, and that the whole purpose of, of doing this, I do not want it to set a precedent, nor should it set a precedent regardless to any other properties on Niskwali. I'd ask staff that if anybody else comes forward to look at making zone changes, that they evaluate it on those merits. We obviously have different reasons for doing this here tonight, and I don't think that we should be looking to rezone property on Niskwali just arbitrarily as a result of this decision. But with that, I'll make the motion to approve.
Mayor Cox, just for clarification, I do need to read the title of the ordinance prior to the council waiving for their reading and introducing it?
And question to the city clerk. We have, we have conducted the public hearing. We now have an action which is ordinance number 2300. We have a request on action for Resolution 13046 and a negative declaration. Can we take those three simultaneously, or do we have to take them separate?
You can vote on them simultaneously, as long as the ordinance and the motion, as long as the title of the ordinance is read and the motion includes the waiving of further reading of the ordinance.
Okay. Do you want to read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville approving the zone change portion of PLN 13-00008 to reclassify property from R4, Very High Density Residential, to C1, Neighborhood Service Commercial, on property located at the northwest corner of Balsam Road and Niskwali Road with an adoption of a negative declaration. Richard Design Associates, Inc., applicant.
Move for adoption, waive for the reading.
Motion, we have a second?
Motion by Mayor Protan McAcrin, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
We have, next item is consent calendar. We have four items, one motion. That's our discussion. Or we request to pull one of those items off. If not, chair is open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a request City Council approve renaming the Pebble Beach Racquetball Center and Pebble Beach Pool as the Doris Davies Youth Sports Center. I thought it was Pebble Beach Park, and that was all-inclusive. I mean, I'm not Pebble Beach Park, but Doris Davies Park. Isn't there a sign that says that out front?
Mr. Mayor, it is Doris Davies Park, however, the, it was still the Pebble Beach Aquatic Center, or something along those lines. It creates a little bit of confusion, because folks come there still thinking they're going to see Pebble Beach Park or Doris Davies', and because of that, we're recommending this change. Additionally, as part of Doris Davies' Trust, when she passed it in 2009, she has a desire for some of the remainder of that money to be used on facilities that benefit youth, and changing it to the Doris Davies Youth Sports Center would allow some of those monies to be spent in that regard.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Vias.
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any issue with this, but if I could ask our city manager, did our Community Services Advisory Committee look at this? Recommendation to the council?
You know, I would have to defer to our acting director, Christian Gunter.
I mean, this seems like it would be something right up their alley. I just want to understand why they wouldn't be the ones recommending it to us.
Good evening, council. No, the Community Services Advisory Committee has not looked at this yet. Part of the reason was, is there's been a number of different occasions where confusions happen, where people have been looking for the Doris Davies Pool, or the Pebble Beach Pool, and for whatever reason, can't find it. This, along with the Doris Davies Trust and the potential for doing things in the future, is the reason for the name change. So, it hasn't been brought up to them yet. We do have things to look at in the future relative to the planning for the buildings and those facilities. Those are probably some of the oldest buildings we have relative to recreation facilities here in the city. So, we had a major pool leak at the beginning of the summer before the pool opened that had to be addressed. The pool is nearing its economic life. There are some things to look at here in the near future. We'd like to do something for the community under the name of Doris Davies before there's anybody who doesn't remember her any longer, so.
Completely understand, and I have no issue with it. I just think this is something that should have gone before the committee, before it came to us. That's all.
I agree.
Thank you, Christian. Was that a 5-0 vote on that issue?
Um, yes. It is now.
It is now. All right.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item two is withdrawn. Item number three, ratification of the Planning Commission's heating report approval for Desert Valley Hospital. The recommendation is adopt Resolution 13-047.
Motion by Mayor Protan McAcrin, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries unanimously.
Then item number four, 2013 Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund allocation. Is this a grant? Or is it just an extended expenditure for the program, a grant?
It is a grant.
Okay, thank you.
This is the expenditure plan for the grant.
And this is something in addition to the two officers we're going to add.
That's correct.
Motion by Councilmember Garcia, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
Item five, award construction contract to Belkor, E-L-E-C-N-O-R, Electric, Inc., New Traffic Signals, La Mesa, Delgado Road, Elavado Road, Pacoima, and interconnect conduit from El Rio Road to Amethyst.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
Just for the council and the public's information, that item will allow us to put in the three signals at the intersections that were made. in the three signals at the intersections that were mentioned before, so that we'll have signalized intersections all the way from I-15 and eventually all the way to 395.
Item D6, the, someone, I'm not sure who asked if the city council wanted to consider where to put the public comment section. There have been some discussions by individuals who have had to wait, that they've met all the approvals, they filled out all the applications, they paid all the fees, and then they have to wait on individuals who've paid no fees but fill out a card and come to the microphone, and take substantial time. That comments from the general public is something that this council has always had at the beginning of the agenda, because generally it's been brief and to the point. There have been other agencies that, in respect for those individuals that have paid large fees and have presentations to make, that they go first. The city council obviously cannot discuss this among ourselves, and so the only way to discuss this is agendize it, and so it's agendized for possible discussion and comments by the council members.
Is it agendized now for discussion? I mean, is now the time?
That's my understanding, is that we asked the city clerk to place it on here, and it's agendized for the discussion at this time.
Well, I'm the one that asked that we talk about it, and I have mixed feelings about it. I think there's the risk of a perception that we're pushing public comment to the tail end and somehow diminishing it, or in some way discrediting public comment. That's certainly not my objective. The business of the council meeting is to do the business of the city. If there's an issue on the agenda, everybody can submit a card and speak to that issue when that issue comes before the council. We all have the nightmare experiences of sitting here for sometimes two hours, listening to repetitive public comment on very, very controversial issues, and a couple of them were issues that we had no authority to make a decision about in response to the public comment. So, I don't know. I don't know what I think. I just think I'd like to hear what others think.
Well, I think that, I can understand the point about the perception, but I think in my time on council and also at the college, a lot of times people come to council meetings, and they don't stay for the whole thing, and they don't understand the process, and it's almost an educational process. And like you said, they can at any time speak to any individual item on the agenda. So, to have the public comments at the end, and especially if we do change the times of the meeting, so we move it up, it's not going to make a great difference. I think that, and I have found that it's more helpful to have them at the end, because a lot of their questions are answered, and they understand the process more, and I think it's a great educational process for the people. And we've sat here for hours and hours and hours and heard public comment in the beginning, and many times the public doesn't have any idea what they're talking about, or that we don't have, like you said, jurisdiction over that. And so, by the time we get to that item, they'll understand it, they'll hear what legal counsel has to say, what the mayor has to say, or individual council members, and so that they can make more, better statements, you know, when it does come time for public comments. And a lot of times, they can get their questions answered, and they might even have a change of opinion on the matter by the end of the meeting. I think it's a good idea.
Well, we'll go over here. Mr. McAcorin?
Well, I would concur with everything that Councilmember Vias just explained, but I'd go a little bit further. Our own planning commission holds off public comment until the end. I sat on the planning commission for nearly eight years, and I found it a little bit difficult transitioning over to the city council and having public comment in the front of the agenda, but I think it just makes sense. In so many occasions, we have people coming up before us, bringing up issues that, once we get into our agenda, are answered, and they wouldn't even need to come before us. So, for the reason of just looking at my previous experience on the planning commission and how the planning commission handled it, as well as our own experience here, I think it's a wise choice for us to do that.
Put it at the end. Councilmember Garcia?
Well, Councilmember McAcorin actually just stated exactly what I have in mind, and that is that I feel that it should be at the beginning of the meeting, even though I do understand that possibly if we had it at the end, they would have a better understanding of the agenda, or possibly an item, you know, that's of their main concern. But I feel that it should be at the beginning.
Beginning or the end?
The beginning of the meeting.
Beginning of the meeting. My view of this has been that individuals will come in, fill out a card, speak to the council. The difficulty that this council has is trying to have a discussion with the individuals for them to understand the appropriate way to address the council or to get an item on the agenda. And I'm going to repeat this. The state legislature, in their wisdom, decided that it ought to be a requirement that individuals can address the local body, and anyone can. The problem is, it's not agendized, and therefore no one in the general public has any prior knowledge or any prior notice that an individual is going to come to the city council and raise questions or give a speech. They have three minutes. Because it's not agendized, the city council cannot discuss it, because otherwise we're holding a discussion on items not on the agenda, which is in violation of state law. We have individuals very frustrated, standing there, demanding an answer or asking a question. And what's really frustrating to the council is many of the individuals know absolutely that we cannot discuss it, or know absolutely that we cannot answer them, and they demand the answer not from the council, but for the people that's watching. And so, it's really difficult for us not to engage in the conversation, but we cannot. The city clerk keeps very careful notes, and then makes a determination if this is an item of the general business that the city needs to discuss, and it can be brought to the city council, and the city council can agendize that. The city attorney, the city manager also have the right to agendize those things that are in public, that are important to the public business. But for the most part, we sometimes wonder, if the individuals call up and indicate they want to give a presentation, and it's explained very, very carefully how to do it, and they ignore it and come and make comments, it makes it difficult for everyone. In the meantime, especially when we have development, or conditional use permits, or public hearings, for individuals to have to jump through the hoops and meet all the requirements and pay huge fees, that they must sit and listen as individuals parade up to the microphone and speak on items that we can't discuss, is almost a disservice to all the people that are trying to do business with the city. I have felt that it should be at the end. On the other hand, I am going to give my opinion to the city council, but the very idea that you're even discussing it is going to cause a controversy. If you decide to leave it as is, it'll be a controversy. If you decide to put it at the end, it'll be a controversy, because there is a good number of people simply looking for controversy. And you're handing them ammunition to complain about something that isn't worth complaining about, but it will happen, guaranteed. I believe that we ought not make a fast and hard rule. Right now, our agenda items are, our agendas are fairly small. We'd like to get to the business. We have individuals to come and speak and leave without ever having any show of concern about what the city's dealing with, or how we're actually dealing with the items that they can speak on as a member of the general public, that they have a right to speak. So, I would propose, I agree, I think this is, I think at least four members agree that it should go at the end, but I would like to do it on a basis to see if it works, to make sure. We have very few people to come and speak right now, but we've had a large number of people, where we have been delayed and delayed and delayed, and we hear from those people who have followed the rules and paid their money and have to sit and listen to things that have no concern, not on the agenda, and really aren't public's business. Sometimes they don't even involve the city at all, state or federal issue. So, because of that, and because now is the time to, if you're going to make any changes, now's the time to do it, and this will give us some time to review it and see if it's appropriate. I think I would suggest to the council that we change the agenda, put the public comment section at the end, hope everyone will cooperate, and let's see how it works.
Well, I was just thinking, because our next item is moving the timing of the meeting, I think Councilmember Vias is right. I think it's going to make it not so late in the evening. I'd like to suggest we do it for, say, a three-month period, through the end of the year, and reevaluate it in January. If we get a lot of public reaction to it, and people are offended, they'll have a chance to come and tell us, and if there isn't much reaction, we'll know that, we'll have an idea, at least, that it works. So, I would kind of like to see a three-month, September, October, November.
Pilot program.
Pilot.
Not agreeable to the council members?
Maybe make a decision in the first meeting in December.
Through December of this year.
Through December, that's four months.
Mayor Cox, point of clarification, when you say you want to move it to the end, should it not be immediately preceding the council member comments? That way you could, is there something in controversy?
That is a very good point.
That's a recommendation I was going to make, is that if we put it based on our current agenda format, which seems to be working well, if we make it agenda item E1 every time, that's immediately preceding items for upcoming agendas, so if a member of the public brings up an issue, any council member could, while it's fresh in their mind, then add it to the agenda for two weeks' hence, or if a council member wanted to respond but can't during public comment, certainly it's immediately then preceded by the council member comments, and council members could at least make a comment at that point, and hopefully the person who's made a public comment would still be around to hear that.
Well, I would go four months through the end of December.
End of the year. Madam Clerk, City Attorney, can this be a simple motion to the council to put this point into temporary?
Absolutely. You can take a motion right now and put it in as a pilot program through the end of the year, and it'll be formalized on the next agenda.
Chair's open for motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem McAcorin. Motion carries unanimously.
My prediction is, this is going to make a lot of people happy. We've had complaints for a long time about this. The next item is the meeting start times, the city council say, at the last council meeting, I believe Councilmember Vias questioned the timing that we start. Councilmember Vias?
Yes, we have been starting closed session at 5:00, and I've noticed that these past few months, or this last year, we don't have that much litigation anymore, so we sit around for sometimes an hour and a half, waiting for open session, and I was wondering if we can start, the closed session continues to start at 5:00, but instead of the meeting starting at 7:00, we start the meeting at 6:00, because I've had a lot of parents say that they'd like to come to the meetings and maybe even bring their children. But the meetings go so late at night, and then by the time they get home, get the kids ready for bed, get the homework done, dinner, all of that, it's too difficult to come to these meetings. So, again, I'd like to try a pilot program for the next four months to see if it increases our audience, and if that works, we'll keep it the same, I mean, we'll keep it that way, and if it doesn't work, and we think we get more people coming this other way, then we'll do the other, and maybe we could, you know, see if we could get more parents involved.
Thank you, council member. Any comments from the other council members?
I, eight years or so, I was on the water district board, and our meeting started at 6:00, and it was, I think, a pretty convenient timeframe. I'm for it.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. I think it will encourage more involvement. I think that that becomes the greatest point. Obviously, our closed sessions are not what they used to be. When I came on as council, we barely get it in. I remember starting after our regular meeting, and sometimes we'd go to midnight, somewhere around that time. But I think the point is, is that, you know, we can get closed session done most of the time within an hour and get regular sessions started at 6:00, and I do believe it will encourage greater involvement from our community.
We have a council, we have a member of the audience waving at me. Hello? No, I take it. You want to speak to this item? Come up, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for letting me speak on this subject without having a card, but speaking as a father who brings his children to council meetings, I think this is a good idea. It really is hard to get the homework done, 5th grade and 3rd grader and dinner, so I think this is a really good idea, and I'm glad that you guys are moving on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Hakeem. So, we suggest it's a pilot program. It would kind of follow along with the item that we just discussed. A motion and a second?
Just one other thing, if for some reason that closed session goes longer than one hour, then we can just go into open and then go back to close?
Correct. You can adjourn the closed session to the conclusion. The other point, while it's appropriate to make a motion at this time, we just want to let you know, we probably have to come back with a number of documents, because the meeting times, I think on, for example, the airport authority has set forth in the JPA, so there's going to be some procedural things we have to do just to change those documents.
Can we set these in motion, though, for the next meeting?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. A motion to proceed with this policy would be fine, and just going to warn you that the next meeting, you might see the item come up with respect to those various entities.
We will expect to hear from the staff because of so many entities at this council, so many entities that we govern through, by sitting on the board, and there may be ordinances or hearings that are required, but at least this sets everything in motion with the understanding that that's the goal. 5:00 executive session, 6:00 regular meetings, pilot program through end of year. Motion and second?
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Councilmember Garcia. Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is a, I make a request for additional appropriations in the amount of $150,000 for completion of the environmental compliance process and design work for Trail Heads for the Mojave River Walk project, to request to approve amendment number two to consultant professional services provider agreement with LSA Associates, Inc. to provide environmental compliance process for the Mojave River Walk project, and increase the agreement by $55,000 to amount not to exceed $160,000 for additional scope of work. They asked for an appropriation, and before we have a council discussion, appropriate from what account, and are there grants involved, or is this money to be taken from another function or activity?
Both, actually. There are grants involved. We've got, I believe it's a $6.2 million grant to put in the Mojave River Walk project. However, this funding would actually come from local transportation funds, those funds that are excess after we met our transit needs. This is an appropriate use of those funds, and so we would be using the LTF excess that we have on hand for this piece of the project.
I, I'm going to reserve comments till the rest of the council, but I do have some comments on this. Comments from the council?
Just a question, and you don't have to do it this moment, but I've never, I'm embarrassed to say, I've never set foot on the River Walk. I have a vague idea of where it is. What I realize now is it goes all the way from the transportation center to the college. Is there a way to get a map or an artist's rendering of this River Walk?
Actually, what I'd like to do is propose that we put an item on the agenda, just a discussion item. It may not be two weeks from tonight, but perhaps four weeks from tonight, just to give the full council an update on the, maybe not the full history of the project. We don't want to be here all night long, and it's not that interesting. But at least what the map looks like, what the grant that we obtained, or were awarded maybe a year or two ago, what that's going to cover, and what pieces would then be left for us to find a way to finish at some point. Just to give you the Cliff Notes version, this will go as far as we can from the college to the river, and then stop, because crossing the river is a bit like climbing Mount Everest, apparently. So, and then getting through the Narrows is also going to be a major problem as well. So, those will be the pieces that are left once this is done.
Well, let me be very candid. When I retired and was not involved, I did read about this in the newspaper, and when I came back, I realized that there was more than one member of the council that was pushing this, and therefore the manager carries out the council's direction. Since I've been on the council, I've had an Since I've been on the council, I've had an awful lot of people make requests, why don't we build the roads? Why don't we repair the roads, patch the roads? I haven't had one single individual suggest that we build River Walk. Sorry, I haven't. And I have been there. I have been from where it starts to where it ends. I did not observe any citizen of Victorville there at the time I was there. I'm not so sure what this is supposed to do. I realize it's gotten a lot of publicity. I think it's time that we revisit this, because I still have an awful lot of people saying, please repair the roads. And if we're taking transportation money to put on a River Walk program, I'm not sure why.
I, I feel the same way. I would, you know, I'm not willing to say no at this time, but I would like to have a presentation of what does the River Walk bring to Victorville? What's the purpose of it? I think that our LTF funds should be used to repair our roads. And I agree with that.
An action item for the council, unless you would like to put this off until staff reports back?
Well, I, I just want to add one thing. I had the extreme pleasure about four or five years ago, spending three days in San Antonio in August. And believe me, San Antonio in August is not a place you'd want to be. But they have a river feature there and a River Walk, and what they have done there absolutely transformed downtown San Antonio. If this project has any hope of doing that for Old Town, I, I want to know more. I, I'm not prepared to take street funds and build a River Walk. I certainly see that point. But I'd like to know more about this thing.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to give you that information. I think it's a very long-term project that had illustrious dreams in its beginning. At this point, I think it's, it's a good time to review the entire project. I will tell you that the, the $6.2 million isn't coming from our own road funds. That grant is from, I believe, Sandbag. I don't know its origination. That would be part of the presentation. So if this is an item that the council wants to hold off until that discussion, I would assume that's something we can, we can do.
Mr. Mayor, I think that would be appropriate, that we hold off.
I think it would be appropriate, unless there are funds to be lost if we don't take an action. Is that, any danger of that? No?
No, shaking heads, so.
All right. If that's agreeable to the council, I'd prefer that we have this amended action, because of the long history of the River Walk, that there be a motion and a second, that this be continued until we have a complete, not a workshop, I don't think we need a workshop.
No, no, just an.
Presentation update from the staff.
Move the continuance?
Second. Aye.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to stay on D9, as involves Cooley Construction, and they are a client of my firm.
Okay. D9 is a Valley Center Drive Phase Two, Lorine Drive to 7th Street, approval of a change order. Staff recommend city council approve a change order in the amount of $47,308 for the Valley Center Drive Phase Two. Just from the staff, what is exactly the change order for and why?
I would have to defer to Sean McGlade, our Director of Public Works.
And on the way up here, I just, just to, I guess, a comment on my own, I had thought that Valley Center Drive was going to be continued through to 7th Street, had visions of Yakaloma being across the river, and opened up an area for, commercial area, and found out that it's two lanes and a left turn lane, and I was really surprised by that. Is this the maximum, the width of this street? Or is this temporary, or just what?
The circulation element of the general plan was amended some time ago to downgrade Valley Center to Collector Street. We did an analysis of the projected traffic flow, and the other constraint that we had was the distance between the, what I refer to as the old Kmart building, that's Midway Appliances, and the, basically, the freeway right-of-way, is insufficient to be able to build a four-lane road with a continuous left-turn pocket. So we're left with a choice of four lanes, where a left turner would block a through lane, or three lanes, two travel lanes, and a continuous left turn. And it was determined that the volumes could be handled by the two-lane road, and the continuous left-turn lane provide the safety for the left turners.
Well, for the most part, there's no left turn going west.
That's right.
Because of the freeway. But if those two pieces of property that are currently vacant develop, you have a left-turn lane for people going south. But for the ones going north, they slow down and they will stop moving traffic. There's not, unless they're going to be required to have an additional lane. But since they have put in the streetlights, curb gutters, and hydrants, it's, it seems like to me that's going to be pretty difficult. It's done. But I would have never voted for that, had I known it was only going to be two lanes and a left turn lane.
Can you explain again the intersection you're talking about, Jim?
If you are coming north on Green Tree Boulevard to 7th Street, and you continue on northerly toward Costco, or beyond the Credit Union, Alaska Credit Union, those lanes go down to two, one lane in each direction with a left turn lane. As it gets to Seneca, well, excuse me, widens back out at Seneca, into two lanes in each direction with a left turn lane. So it, it, you know, I'm not that much involved in traffic. It looks like a choke point, what I was looking at, for right now, it's probably adequate. But we've had a lot of discussion for a long time, that Yakaloma is going to be extended to Green Tree Boulevard, and with a huge commercial area there, to direct traffic into a, to, from four lanes to two lanes in both directions. This didn't seem too logical to me, but I don't have the background or the data or the numbers, nor do I know when this general, the element of the general plan was changed. I didn't know, I haven't seen the staff report. I was just, it was open, I drove it, I was excited, and I thought, well, obviously, this is temporary. When you look at all the public improvements, it's set in concrete, including all the streetlights and the fire hydrants and the curb and gutter. So I was just a little surprised.
When, when we approved that grant for the design of the intersection at Green Tree and Hisparia Road from the Yakaloma Bridge, that, what we approved was two left turn, coming west of, across this bridge that hasn't been built, of course, but coming west into Green Tree Boulevard, going to have two left turns onto Hisparia and one right turn onto Hisparia. No direct option to go onto Green Tree Boulevard, and the reason we all were comfortable with that was to move it to Nisqually.
No. I know the discussions, but I've also seen the plan. You do go on that street, onto Green Tree Boulevard.
Is that going to be an option, to go straight onto Green Tree?
We have never eliminated that possibility. It was, to address a concern of a previous council member, we indicated how the striping could be laid out to provide, I think it was even a triple left, for the westbound traffic from Yakaloma, Green Tree, over to Hisparia Road, and right turn lane, but no through.
And of course, one of the most compelling arguments about having that bridge for the benefit of Victorville was to get Apple Valley folks to come to Costco.
Well, it's.
And a right turn would get them to Seneca, and it would be a little aroundabout, but gets them to Costco.
If, if you can imagine what the possibilities are, they all have been argued in regard to that improvement, from not allowing them to go on Green Tree, directing them on Hisparia Road to Nisqually, to allowing them to go on Green Tree, to redirecting truck route, truck traffic, everything has been discussed. It hasn't been finalized. It's going to be a long time before it is. But, you know, and I, you know, I haven't seen the traffic studies, but I watched the traffic on 7th Street, turn right toward Costco, and on Green Tree, and coming over the bridge, headed east, turning left. And you, you physically have to stand there and watch it to have an appreciation that they're funneling in into one, into traffic. And as, you know, buy the property and don't let it develop, and it'll work. But as soon as the commercial buildings, and they're not going to have their entrance off the alley, they're going to have it off that street. And every car headed northeast turns into the driveway, stops all the traffic behind it. Making sense?
But it's done, right?
It's done. So tell us about the change order, Sean.
The change order was necessary to address certain concerns that came up during construction in the field that weren't, we weren't aware of beforehand, and it was dealing with drainage, mostly.
The, the change, you indicated in the, in the body under the discussion, the reason for the change was to accommodate drainage from adjacent businesses to the streets in unknown field conditions. The change involved altering the profile of the street, which required some removal and replacement of curb and gutter. There are also several revisions to the drain pipes. Where is it draining now, and where is, is that changed, or is it just enlarged, or wasn't accommodated before, or?
To, it's a very, very flat section of street, and the original design was attempting to increase the grade in the street to make it drain better. But in doing so, it, it blocked some drainage coming from the Midway Appliance site and the site adjacent to it. There was also a storm drain there that we, nobody knew of. And so during construction, all of this became evident, and we had to revert back to a flat street grade to make it work.
Okay. Thank you, Sean. Any other questions from council members? Recommendation, staff recommend city council approve a change order in the amount of $47,308.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Councilmember Vias. Motion carries with Mayor Protem McEckern absent.
I ran out of agendas. I thought maybe we had, I thought I had another item, but no, that's it. Okay, at this point in time, then, I'm sorry, council members, discussion of possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agendas?
Nothing.
I'm not sure if something needs to be agendized, but I do have some concerns regarding animal control response. We've gotten a lot of complaints regarding animal control, and I'm wondering if there's resources that they're lacking, what, what we can do as a council to help out in that area, and if staff feels it necessary to agendize some resources to go into that area, I would recommend to do so.
We would love to add animal control officers. There is severe lacking of, of resources in animal control. Unfortunately, it's one of those areas that, that doesn't have its own funding source, and the licenses that we charge for don't come nearly close enough to paying for it. So ultimately, it's part of the general fund that is funded, you know, after police, after fire, after some of the programs. So certainly, that's something we could take a look at, at our next meeting, actually. We intend to have a budget update, and to the extent that there's dollars available, that could be a very good discussion point, actually, just in two weeks.
And this, and this request is in no way to take staff out to the woodshed or anything like that, but just to see what we can do as a council to help them with a, a better response to the public.
Yeah, unfortunately, due to the lack of resources, our animal control officers, many times, are going from call to call to call and can only respond to emergencies. And if there's a more routine call, that it may feel like an emergency, but in comparison to the other calls, it's, it's not. Sometimes those may take a day or two to get to.
I read your memorandum. It's quite well taken. It's a tough, tough area to deal with, it really is. Other items, other comments from the council members?
Well, I, I'd like to see that topic agendized. Personally, I think I've probably heard more direct complaints, I said this in an email today, from citizens complaining about barking unruly dogs than bad streets. Maybe people don't complain to me about streets, but, but they do complain about outrageous dogs.
Streets don't keep them up at night.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other comments from council members?
Well, I, I think along those lines, and to the greater overall issue of strategic planning, just curious as to when that's going to be agendized, if that's going to be a workshop, what are, what are the prospects for the city council to have that coming forward to us?
That, again, is going to be discussed in two weeks with the budget amendment. There'll be an item in that budget amendment, assuming our numbers come in, as we expect them to. That would add a few dollars, not much, for a strategic planning session or sessions with the full city council and the public.
I'll head.
Okay. Last item, report from staff and council members. On my left, the council member Garcia.
Yes, I have something here. On Saturday, August 31st, 2013, the Old Town Cooperation Committee had the High Desert Mariachi Juvenil, it's a long word, High Desert Mariachi Juvenil, perform in Old Town. It was very well presented. The group is very talented and did a beautiful presentation. They performed very professionally. They are very young in age. I think the youngest is like 12, the oldest possibly 18, but they performed like professionals. It was intended to draw people to the Old Town shops that are open for business, and there are quite a few that are open right now. However, not many people attended or showed up. I believe it was not a good weekend for that. But they did draw a crowd, and I was there, and I took my family with me. They also provided hot dogs, soft drinks, and water for free, and we had a good time. And even though there was not very many people there, I believe that they are really trying to do something to promote the Old Town. Thank you.
A couple of things. I'd just like to take my hat off to city staff, especially Monica Peterson, for the great job that was done on La Mesa and Nisqually ribbon cutting last Friday. We had a great turnout. There were so many people there, and even our mayor brought out his own Mustang. What year is that?
66.
66. I think, and you were riding in the.
I got to ride with him.
Councilmember Kennedy and I got to ride on an antique fire truck over that. Councilmember Vias also participated. I just appreciate the entire council's involvement in that. And obviously, that has, has opened up an east-west connection unlike any other in our history. And once the actual on-ramps and off-ramps open, it's going to be, it's going to have even more dramatic effects on the traffic on Bear Valley Road. Secondly, I'd just like to thank our city manager, Doug Robertson, and staff for meeting with the real estate property management industry on Water District and customer service issues. I don't know that this is exactly the form I wanted it to take, but the fact of the matter is, is that it's being effective, it's working. We're making some drastic improvements in that regard, and I'm thankful to you and staff for doing that. So, that's all I have.
Councilmember Vias? Councilman Kennedy?
No, just that Councilmember Vias did a nice job ringing the bell on that fire truck.
Well, I, I, thank you, Mayor Protem McEckern. I was going to speak about that, because I did want to thank staff and council, and everyone who participated in that ribbon cutting. And boy, have there been a lot of positive comments about that. So, job well done, everyone. Very, very good, and when they get the off-ramp, on-ramps completed, it is really going to be good. So, thank you, thanks to everyone. That concludes this meeting, and thank you very much for you people who showed up and participated. Thank you and good night.[1798.13][1798.13]